Thank you, candidates. You're proud of me. So the way we're gonna start is we will start with two-minute introductions, and then we will have question and answer. And I tried to get little index cards on all of the tables. And if you have a question, write it down. Lois Dunn over there in the white desk will be circling around and putting those cards up to me at half the stage. And I will try to get to as many of those as we can. So two-minute introductions. The candidates will have one minute to answer the questions that are put to them, and then they will have 90 seconds for closing remarks. And we will have roughly an hour, so I expect some very robust discussion. So we're gonna start off, and so that I can keep track, we're gonna start off with, you can see up here, they introduce themselves. But just again, for District C, we have Mike Grabholm and Andrea Heights. For District D, we have Will Jones and Casey Cole. And for District E, we have Angela Lima and Vicky Woods. And we're gonna start with Vicky, because I'm the slackface, and so I started there. But that should wanna be up there. And so, and candidates, we do have timers down here sitting right in front, and they will help you time manage your comments. So they'll let you know when there's a 30 second, and they'll also let you know when there's a stop. It's a little hard to see, but the stop sign, trust me, the stop sign, it's... Okay, alright.
So, are these on?
They are on?
Yeah.
They should be. Hold it close to your...
Okay.
There we go.
Alright. Well, hello, everyone. I'm Vicky Woods, and I am running for school board District E here in District 51. It's been my life passion to work with children here in our community. And this opportunity allows me to work, again, with children in a meaningful way. Successful schools require us to partner with families to support our strong teachers and to ensure a quality learning environment for every child in our district. So over my 30 years of education, I've been a classroom and special education teacher. I worked at the district level as an administrator, supporting schools across the valley, and working and partnering with community agencies to serve students with disabilities. And then my last seven years, I worked as a building principal here in Grand Junction. So I do understand the complexities of our school systems. I've worked with federal and state budgets. I understand the limitations of our state funding. And I believe that's not an excuse or a barrier for us to have excellence in our schools. I believe it's written in our stakeholders, including our teachers, our leaders, and our school board, to create all of us moving in the same direction for the benefit of our schools. Sorry, I can't read. Was that District? Okay. So I am really, you know, committed to structuring stability and collaboration within our school district. And I want to thank all of you for being here and supporting our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Nessa?
Angela? Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to view the law. When we ran in COVID-19 four years ago, District 51 had become something many others could not imagine. The system had lost its way for getting its core purpose, to educate our kids with knowledge and skills and strive, being capable adults. We needed to get back to making the main thing the main thing. I found the organization here financially ruined, low reserves, broken health care plan, low teacher pay, buildings in disrepair, significant declining enrollment, $141 million new high school that needed to be built on time and under budget. Something had to be done about District 51's low student proficiencies, and we did it. Recent outcomes show strong growth. Students mean their existing state averages and they're in lower category. 2025 has the largest percentage of graduates in District 51 history. And 100% of our schools have now achieved the top two levels with the state of Colorado. I run fiscal responsibility and transparency. I spent countless hours digging at the senior leadership and staff, and doing waste and efficiencies. We found over $600 million in deferred maintenance fees. Thanks to community trust, we recently passed a bond, and you guys have allowed us to do some of that work. We've been to reserve from irresponsible 3% to 20%, and that's distinctly responsible. District 51 is significantly better than we found it. Student outcomes are way up. This took the board willing to do the hard things. I've done it for four years, and would be honored to devote to it and continue to make District 51 even more successful this year. I'm Angela Lima, and when we go reelection, we can give District 51's school board District E.
Thank you. Casey?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for being here today. I am Casey Cole, and I am running for school board District D this fall. And I'm so honored to be in front of all of you lovely men and women here today. I am a parent, and I'm a former classroom teacher, and I also work within two local small businesses. So I bring a different perspective to our District 51 as a parent, former teacher, and someone in the business sector. As a parent, I understand the realities of sending your child, your precious child, into a public education system. And I understand the need and want to have that public system or public education be what you need it to be and that our children are being brought up in our education system alongside the parents. As a classroom teacher, I understand the realities of the classroom, and I offer that bridge between parents and teachers that is so often a dichotomous. I really hope to bring those two pieces together. But I also work in the business sector, so I understand how important it is to have a highly educated community and workforce to drive needs accounting economy forward. Whether it be budgets, or policies, or communication with our community, I'm right there, willing to fight for our students and our schools. And that's why my priority is our students and our schools and the people that are within them. So I am so excited to hear your questions and get to know all of you a little bit better to see if I would be your next board member. So again, my name is Casey Cole, and I'm running for District 51's school board District D. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Will Jones. I'm running for reelection in District D of the school board base. About four years ago, when we sat here, and I sat here before, a bunch of people, and thought, do I wanna do this? Do I really wanna do this? I thought, people thought I was crazy. They thought I'd lost my mind. But I have a passion for kids. I have a passion for our community. I've been in the community, working with our kids for well over 20-something years, whether it be coaching, or being a mentor, or working for various agencies. And so I've taken this pretty seriously. And in this time, I said when I ran last time that I wasn't gonna be just a person that sits behind a desk or sits in an office. I'm gonna be in the schools, and I've done that. Visiting schools to where we go to see what's happening in our schools, what our kids are seeing, what our teachers are seeing, what our administrators are seeing. We were fractured unit when we took over four years ago, and with a lot of work and a lot of communication and collaboration with teachers and administrators, we finished District against something we can all be proud of. We had done many things, starting with COVID, where we were at home and sitting at home in front of radios and TVs and computer screens. And we chose down, we buckled down, and we got our kids back in school, back to in-person where they needed to be, and our kids thrive from that. Those are things that we take very seriously. And now we're in another serious thing where we're taking care of our safety and security. And that's something that I plan on taking into very, very seriously these next four years if I'm reelected. Our safety, our kids are very important to us. So I wanna thank you guys for voting for me the first four years and hope that I get your vote for the next four years.
Alright, well, good morning or afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having us today. So I'm Andrea Heights. I'm running for reelection in District C. And I've had the great honor of serving as your school board president for the last four years. When I ran four years ago, I really wanted to commit to bringing stronger leadership, greater accountability, and a renewed focus to District 51. And I feel like that's exactly what we've done. During our time on the board, we've improved academic outcomes, increased graduation rates, and we've raised teacher pay. We also completed Grand Junction High School on time and under budget, which is unheard of these days. We also passed a bond and will let the override without recent taxes. And we implemented a no cellphone policy to give students more time focused on learning and time placed to face their teachers. I'm a mom. I have two older ones that have graduated from District 51, and I'm a business owner. So I understand how important it is to prepare students for life beyond graduation. So whether it's college, career, the trades, or the military. We have made historic progress. I'm running for reelection to keep that momentum going. Leaders matter, and I would be honored to earn your vote again. Thank you so much.
Mike?
Here. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Mike Grabholm. I'm running for school board Area C. I'm a U.S. military veteran. I graduated at Central High School, so I came up in District 51. I like the way things are going. There's always room for improvement. I wanna help it out, everyone. I have four children living in public schools in this valley, and I wanna be there to help them flourish. They need to be prepared, not just for, you know, college or trade schools, military service as well, but for life in general. You know, coming up from District 51, I'm in my 30s. I still don't know how to do my taxes. My budget is within 900 in most months because I didn't get that kind of education until... That is something beneficial, and I wanna see that in our schools, whether, you know, that comes from me, if I get your vote, or Andrea, Will, Angela, Casey, Vicky, anybody up here. I'd love to see that carry on. So I'm Mike Grabholm, and I'm running for District C.
Thank you. So we had a half a dozen questions that were submitted online before the forum, and I already have six more, but I'll take more. We'll go as far and as fast as we can. And we'll start with Angela for the first question. And it's probably appropriate, which you actually mentioned. It says, "School District 51 recently announced for the first time that our district has had 100% of its schools order in the top two state levels with performance standards, which basically is the state's report card. In your view, how did we achieve this announcement? And what else do you need to be there to continue to improve on the ground?"
Thanks for the question, Diane. You know, I thought about this a little bit over the weekend, and, you know, how did we get here? We got here by changing from a district of schools to a cohesive school district with a leadership of board and a leadership of Dr. Hill and his team. They have really buckled down, told us what they needed. We found a way to meet those needs, whether it's updating curriculum, whether it's updating training. All of those needs have to come together to pull off what we did, which is get all of those schools into the performance levels for the state.
Thank you. Let's just sit down a moment, please.
Great. Thank you so much, like Angela said, for that question. This is a momentous occasion for celebration. And I just really wanna celebrate our schools and the people within them. That's where the magic happens. Our teachers, our staff, our students, our family and our community members, we've all come together, rallied around our district leadership to make sure that these gains happen. So yes, it's a momentous occasion to have. But I also think we have lots of room for improvement. I hear from our educators and our schools a lot that our class sizes are fairly large, and I'd like to work on that as we move forward because we do know that small class sizes do impact our education. But I'd also like to continue to work alongside our teachers and our staff members to make sure that what we are teaching in our class meets our basic county values and also helps our students grow and become productive members of our society.
How did it happen? I think it happened with lots of communication, lots of trainings. We did lots of meetings with teachers and leadership. And it has to start with thought. Dr. Hill and his staff have done some, you know, lots and lots of intense meetings and discussions with us, with the board, with curriculums and things like that. And we've all come together to agree what's the best curriculum. And then it goes down to our teachers. Our teachers are the ones that are teaching our kids and explaining to them a way that helps them to achieve. So, and we don't give them, and it goes to the parents, it goes to everybody. So it's just one big team effort. So, do we, can we improve? Yeah, we can always improve. And 100% is good, but we want 110%. We want 120%. We want 200%. So it doesn't stop just because we are efficient. We wanna work on those ones that may have lower scores to achieve even a higher score. So it's always good to set a mark and achieve the mark. So we can always do better, but yeah.
I wanna add a little bit. I haven't seen the stop sign come up yet. So you guys are awesome. Andrea?
I'm building out a groupie else, but I can go on two things, accountability and consistency. When we first came on, I had heard from many teachers that there was no consistency with curriculum. It was either we would pick something and we wouldn't stick with it long enough. And by the time that they kind of finally got in the groove with something, the board would pick something else. And so we committed to picking high-quality resources and sticking with them. And so one of those was first our reading curriculum, which was we returned back to a science of reading curriculum, and we decided to stick with it. The other thing, so that created consistency throughout the district. And then was accountability. One thing this board did was we returned back to a robust evaluation of accountability with our superintendent. And then we expected that to trickle all the way down with his staff, and then that to go with principals and all the way down. And so that accountability, I think, has shown up throughout the district.
Okay, thank you. Net? Sorry?
I feel like I'm getting into that horse here. First, in form, I was like, 100%. That's incredible, and that is my excellent reach. And then it goes to the end, teachers, students, administrators, and the current school board. I would say, and I'd love to see about 200% where we go and regard those students as a last chance to be learned and whatever. And it starts with the teachers' board. It's like the beginning of the day, the teachers belong in the classroom with our students, have unbridgeable ties, get that education, and maybe, maybe what's obvious.
Okay. So moving on to our next question. I'm sorry. So we need state accreditation for our school district. It's incredible. There is no doubt. And that's a result of our teachers, our leaders, and most important, our students working incredibly hard. I have to hand it to our district leadership and the strategies that they put forward to make sure this momentum moves across the school district. I would say that this momentum will not stop with the change in leadership. And I would also say that the momentum didn't happen because of that leadership. It's a direct result of committed teachers, leaders who are focused, and our students who have a strong perseverance. So I'm committed to becoming a source of stability and collaboration that instills confidence in our schools and the work that our district teams need to contribute. Thank you. Thanks. And my apologies, okay?
That's okay.
Okay. Moving on to question number two. And Casey, we're up the bell on this one. So in recent years, the district has found itself having to close schools due to low enrollment. But the monitor that the district uses projects that this trend is going to continue. As a school board member, what are the key elements that you would use in deciding which schools to close should that become necessary? And what should the process look like?
Thank you for the great question. I think school closures have really caused a lot of pain and heartbreak within our community. And it's our role as school board members to really try to ease that the best that we can so that our students and our families and our community have a clear path forward and what comes next. School closures is very undecided. No one knows really what's going to happen next. There is no best school to close. It's not going to be an easy choice, no matter what. And as board members, we need to face that with humility and grace and recognizing where our community is. I believe the process should be as transparent as possible in order to still protect our schools and our students and the people that are within them. I think that comes at the highest mark. And listening to our families and our communities when we decide what types of schools that we do need to close and make sure that we really are closing them for the right reasons. And I would just say, more than anything, the process needs to be transparent and accountable to the community. Thank you.
School closures.
Hello.
There it goes.
School closures. It's a very, very difficult subject, because we've had to go through a couple of them. I think we did, when we closed East, it was a difficult decision, and we admitted that there were some mistakes made. But when we went the second time around for the elementary schools, I think the process that we committed, we, not admitted, but we made a committee of people to go through certain curriculums and certain things to go through, to qualify for those things. It's hard. It's hard to close any school, because of course, no matter what school you go to, it's always gonna be your favorite school. And somebody's gonna be attached to it somehow, whether it be kids, the teachers. So it's not an easy decision. But I think as long as you have gone and exhausted every option possible, and you are very, very upfront and honest about it, and it's not a business decision, you know, it's just more of a, sometimes you gotta take the personal feelings out of it and go with what's best for, what's best for the community. So, though it is difficult to close a school, I think as long as, as Casey stated, we're honest, we're transparent, and we do the right things, then it's just as he asked, we made.
Yeah, so thinking back to what Director Jones said, we had put together a robust policy and procedure process. Prior to that, there was nothing in place. We didn't even have a closure policy. So with a procedure process, we enlisted many community members, teachers, principals. And so there was many hours of work put into that process to try to make it as objective as possible. While there's no perfect way to put this together, it's probably the best that it could probably be to try to make it as objective as possible. And these are very difficult decisions to make. And I know every person up here that's had to be in that position to make a decision has lost nights of sleep and is at agony over it. So it's a hard, hard decision to make. So I think we've come up with a good procedure to do it, and it is transparent at this point. And so I think we have a good way to do it this, moving forward.
It's on the stop sign. Yep. Alright. Mike?
I'll give you the experience of the question, and I certainly have a reasonable answer. I really think about those in schools, declining enrollment, kind of forces them out. They have a bigger issue why they're not declining. I'd like to see why it shouldn't be not declining. See if it's something to change, because it came up, we should adjust it to declining rates. When it comes to closing schools, I hadn't seen the procedures that have been put out. I'd love to see that in a manual or something. That way, we're better equipped if this comes up again. But I know it's a very difficult decision. I don't need the current level of making that decision. I couldn't say it's a never-ending hotspot, how or where or why a school would need to be closed.
Thank you.
Certainly, declining enrollment has placed our families in emotional turmoil that we couldn't imagine. And I would have to say that for our school staff as well. Some of those folks have worked in those schools for the entirety of their career. But there's really two points that I might continue around this issue. The first being our fiscal responsibility to our district community and the importance of having quality schools for every child in District 51. So any consideration of school closures should use a fair, consistent process that's transparent from the beginning to the end when our staff is moved and our families are moved into another location. Thank you.
Netwa?
Probably one of the toughest things we've been tasked to do, being on this board. Number one, we have to be fully responsible. When the money's not there, we have to decide what money is left and how do we spend that? How do we keep important programs and keep our schools as strong as possible? When this came up the first time, it was very, very quick. We were at a financial cliff, and we had to make a decision about closing East High and East Middle School very, very quickly. After that, we brought together the community and came up with a plan, with a system, with a process that we would follow each and every time we come faced with this problem, which F-100 students per year were dropping off. We're probably going to be faced with more of that. And we've got to be able to look at it primatically, physically responsibly, and make sure that we're taking care of those students and the staff as early as we can. I think the district has done a pretty good job of that.
Alright, thank you. So I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this third question. I actually have three questions around this, so I'm gonna try and put it kind of all together. And there have also been comments on social media and in the printed media around the role of the union potentially in this election and where your, all of you, for all of you, where your campaign contributions are coming from. How are, do you view that? And how are we going to ensure that the taxpayers and the parents of this district, that regardless of who has supported you in the past or who provides campaign contributions, that you're going to keep their interests first? And I think, Will, we're starting with you this time, right?
Me? Alright. That's a great question. With me, everybody who knows me knows Will Jones is his own person. I've always been one of those people that if I believe in something, I'm gonna say it. I may be wrong of what everybody else thinks, but that's just who I am. That's the way I was brought up. No matter who donates to my campaign or what you do, I'm not betrothed to anybody, but I'm supposed to do the best job that I am for our kids. And that's what I've elected for, for school board. And that's what you donated to my campaign for, was for me, to make sure our kids are safe, we're getting education, and we're good to go. With that being said, if it's in the best interest of our kids, no matter if it was a union or a person or who, I'm still gonna do and vote the best way for our kids. So it doesn't matter, money, money doesn't make who you are. Money doesn't buy anything. So because you have donated to me, it means you believe in me. It doesn't mean that you want me or anything like that. So with the way that I am, no matter if it's a union or who it is, your donation for me is just simply what it is, donation for my campaign.
Andrea?
I'll answer this the same way I did in 2021. I believe taking money from an organization that you have to collective bargain with or do negotiations with is a conflict of interest. And so therefore, I would not take money from an organization that I would have to turn around and then do negotiations with. And so I think it's a conflict of interest, in my opinion. So I'm not taking any monies from any organization I would have to negotiate with.
Okay. Mike?
That's a great question. And like Will said, you're not mine in person, like that day you donate to my campaign because you believe in what I want, whether it be a union, church group, individuals in the community, things like that. When it all says that, you know, at the end of the day, I'm somebody, I know a lot. You probably don't know me, but for those of you that do, it doesn't matter who you are or how much you donate to my campaign. That's what we're coming to do, is to my campaign, if you believe in what I would like to see happen on the school board, not because you think you can put me in power yet to screw my decision, conflict of interest. You know, the way I see it, you don't have to be obligated to the stakeholders. And teachers, yes, you know, are union members, but they're also stakeholders, right? It's like everybody who's a stakeholder for District 51. So I won't necessarily see the conflict there.
So your associations, like any organization, have the right to endorse candidates that they feel will support their needs? I think this really is a question about your integrity as a candidate or in public office. And I have spent my entire career focusing and looking to students in the school district and this community. And that focus will not change regardless who decides to endorse me. So I think it's very clear to me that the priority is our students, and that's where I sink.
So Andrea, my, my experience is exactly the same. For me, any organization that I have to negotiate with, people I can bargain in negotiations would be a very potential, at the very least, conflict of interest. So I would not, I would not do that. It isn't about being anti-union or association. It's about the fact that we have to then go into negotiations with them. So, you know, if teachers choose to have a group for representation, they are perfectly within their rights, and I have no problem with that. My issue comes to when you take money from an organization, or is that potential for a conflict of interest?
Casey?
Hi, thank you for the question. I agree with a lot of what's already been said up here so far. When you contribute to a campaign, you're contributing to a campaign. And like Vicki said, it really does come down to your integrity and your character. As someone who has been part of the M D E A Association before, I know firsthand that what my job is, is filtering a lot of the crap out and making sure that any decision that comes down is about our schools and our students. And I have held on to that so tightly since I have started this campaign process that really my focus is on schools and on students. And that's where my loyalty lies to our schools and our students. In order to hold on true to that loyalty, I have to pay attention to all stakeholders. That includes our parents and our community, our educators, our staff members, and our administrators. It is not a one-size-fits-all. Every voice matters. And we have to do what's best for our schools and our students. That's where my loyalty lies.
Okay, thank you. So we actually have two questions here, so one related, so bear with me as I try and compress these two as well. But I think, why you? What qualifications do you bring to be in a leader of the largest employer with the largest budget in Mesa County? What, what do you bring to the table for such a one-man task? And I'm going to start again.
All right, well, I have four years under my belt of leading this so far. Prior to that, I had actually sat on a couple of different boards. I had actually sat on a charter school board and helped navigate that school as it got up and running and also taking off as well. Prior to that, I sat on the Grand Junction Area Realtor Association Board, and I'm actually also sitting on that board again. I think board experience is really helpful in navigating it. I'm also a business owner, so I understand what it takes to make tough decisions and what it takes to make payroll, especially on my own. And, and I have kids in the district as well and part of this community. I'm a Central graduate as well of Project D-51. And I love being able to pour back in our community. So I think there's a lot of things that I bring to the table. And I just feel like I bring a lot, and I've already brought the experience to show for it.
Casey?
Well, I have the leadership in the military. You know, it's kind of really, it's, it's Catholic. You know, for 237 leaders now, militaries, government, and, and, you know, I think. Not much has changed in that style of leadership. We've gotten, you know, with the times, we've fallen a little bit. So I bring that as kind of a leadership. I have not sat on the board other than the motion board, which is completely different. I have four kids in this, in public schools here. You know, I do talk to those for the last six years. I've seen the students in this valley, I've seen their struggles. And I know that all it takes, for the most part, is just one solid adult in their corner and they can rally. And if I can do that, I can start a new, I can do that as a school board.
Thank you. Vicki?
So this is an easy one for me. I think it starts with being mom. I think every parent in this community wants the best schools and the best teachers for their children, and they should deserve that. My life's passion has been working with children in this community, both outside of the school setting and as an educator for the past 10 years. During that time of being educator, I had the privilege really of working across all schools. I have both been a teacher and an administrator. That requires two very complex skill sets. Sometimes I have to make hard decisions about what's happening in schools or holding our teachers and staff accountable to what we have dedicated our lives to do. So yes, I feel like I have good students.
Angela?
So what drove me initially to run four years ago was I had, had been the owner of a post-secondary school in town for about 16 years. And what I saw is that the kids coming from D-51 simply were not ready for post-secondary education and adult life. So with my experience, both as a school owner, I work with the Department of Ed, the state, and many regulatory areas that, that are quite complicated. And making a payroll, being the one who's responsible for making sure that that happens, making sure that our health care plan is, is good and solid and affordable for our people. I've also sat on the MOSU board, which is the connection between CNU and our career and technical education with the district, possibly the D-51 Foundation, and have worked greatly with the Chamber of Commerce to continue to grow our workforce regardless of our students.
Please.
Thank you. Well, first, can I just point out what a wealth of knowledge we have up here? And that has been one of my largest commitments to being on the board is bringing forth a wealth of knowledge and making sure that our board is as represented as possible with as many different voices and perspectives as possible. What I bring to the table is I bring, like Vicki said, I'm a parent of a child who's about to enter public education. And I'm also a former classroom teacher, so I bring in a lot of education classroom background knowledge. And I also work for the private sector. I am working, I do operations in an office administration. So I see budgets, I see how, you know, different parts of the community enter into our workforce and how important it is to have a healthy D-51 graduation come into our workforce so that they're ready to continue to make Mesa County thrive. So that's what I bring, that great pronged approach, that I'm a mom, a former classroom teacher, and I have business professional experiences. Thank you.
My qualifications is I've been in Mesa County for over 30-something years. And about 25 of those, I've been working with youth, whether it be with football or basketball or softball, or you name it. I was a resident supervisor for kids for quite a few years. I have been at Central High School now for 15 years coaching football. Five before that was at Grand Junction. And for 25 years, I've been on the board of directors for Grand, sorry, Grand Valley Youth Football. I am on the board of directors for Adaptive Heroes. I work with Special Olympics. So I see kids on a daily basis. I rather work with kids sometimes more than adults. But I, it's just, I have a passion for kids. I've been in our community. I'm a very outgoing community member. Where I stay is in the community, sometimes missing my own home life to hang out with the kids. So my qualifications, I'm on the chat, I'm on adaptive, I'm on, sorry, I'm on the CHAS board and the delegate assembly board for the Academy.
Thank you all. All right, moving on, and the next question, we're going to start with Mike. And we're actually going to stay with the budget discussion. So in the recent special section, the legislature actually avoided making cuts to school funding. But as we all know, they have a ongoing deficit issue that they're going to need to address. And we also made a base in the recession. So with that being mine, do you have any sort of a plan or list of priorities for where cuts will be made if, when it comes necessary to the budget for the schools?
I don't necessarily have a plan. You know, you always hope for, that you don't have to. If it's needed, you need to present your budget, find where you can trim it fast, so to speak, in programs that maybe aren't as necessary as they were 10, 15 years ago. It, it, it breaks my heart that these school managers are, are against budget crisis because it's, it's our kids that suffer. So you want to minimize the suffering for our students and our employees and things like that, and our stakeholders as much as you can. To be unavoidable, you know, you, you got here all in terms of what they're asking, and ideally, you don't have to cut anything.
Great.
Yes, funding for schools. Comes from the P L R I, so it's just local and state funds. And I'm very thankful that we have state, our state legislators that are advocating for the separate D-1 needs. And I know that happens across our state with municipal districts. We have been fortunate that our local support through the overrides has come through. And I am guessing that we'll be asking for that again, and so on. Avenue. We're also fortunate to have a very sophisticated department in District 51 who keeps us apprised and updated on both the limitations and opportunities with the state funding. As a school board member, I feel like it's essential to be informed advocates to continue to bring forth what's happening in our schools, around our school budget, and we'll be asking our constituents to assist us.
Angela?
You're absolutely right. We didn't get the cuts that we were cleaning up on. But we did get a significant cut to our budget this year for the tune of about $9 million, which made it very difficult to continue to do a lot of the things that we had hoped to continue, including our teachers, maybe increases. The way that these schools are funded is, is pretty crazy. And out of 178 schools, we're 174 down the list for our funding. So we can expect more cuts to come, unfortunately. That is definitely something we're going to have to deal with. We do have an amazing finance department, an amazing CFO. I've spent hours upon hours upon hours, mulling over the budget, digging deep. We have made some never-ending cuts across the district, including about 50% cut at the top of administration level. So we have found savings. We have come in as entries on time and under budget for injection high school with the work that we're doing from this.
I'm going to ask that John.
Sorry. There's more, hold on.
Thank you so much again for the question. Like everyone else up here has said, we, we are in a tough spot financially. And just like, you know, a household budget, we really have to prep, we have to budget what we prioritize. And we have to stick to the basics and make sure that our schools and our students are getting what they need. And that means taking a hard look at some of these other, some, any other budget items and really trying to make the best decision that we can with humility and grace and understanding as we move forward towards those cuts. It also, like Vicki said, means we might have to come to our community to bring forth some more funding towards our district. But I also hope to bring our community into our budgeting discussions and ask them, what do we feel like as a community we need to fund and budget? And how can we together make sure that our schools and our students have what they need? But that doesn't mean that the decision is on the community. As a board member, that's my decision. And I have to be very firm in what I believe and make sure that we are budgeting what we prioritize and sticking to the basics so that we can get through this as unscathed as possible.
As, as everybody said, we have a really good finance committee. The, the work they do is truly amazing. They've been award-winning for 20-something years now. And, you know, constantly achieving more. So when it comes to things like this, Mel and her, her team do a great job for us. We do dive into it. We do make a lot of decisions. We do take, we have very many two, two-on-ones and various meetings and trying to figure out where we can make cuts. And when we have made cuts from the top on down, there's been many back, many positions that have not been backfilled because of that reason. Assistant superintendent, we didn't even fill those things. And then we unfortunately, we tried to do everything possible not to cut our teachers' jobs. So where we have to cut unnecessary programs, we do that. But everything we do is done out of, not as spite, but just out of necessity. But I think with the communication and the concentration and transparency, the district has done a great job of it.
Andrea? Yeah, so we try to keep the cuts as far away from the classroom as possible. It's really important to make sure that our teachers and students are priority. And obviously, we want to make sure that we keep robust resources, you know, with the kids. The other thing is, we have done a study of where we are tending to run a little bit fat in the district. And so we are very well aware of where we need to probably trim up. And so the board has tasked Dr. Hill and the staff to take a hard look at some of those areas and maybe programs that we need to cinch our belts on. We are not going to necessarily trust that the state is going to give us any new dollars. And so we are going to have to really rely on ourselves to say where we're going to have to cinch our belts up and see where we have to do that. We are committed also, with no new dollars probably coming from the state, knowing that we really do need to commit to finding a step, that step increase for our teachers next year. So we have to look at doing that as well.
Okay, great. All right, so let's see, only a couple more. I know it seems like a lot. So given the politics are covered present, how do you promote a balanced, bipartisan approach to school history to ensure that all voices are heard? So what would be your strategy for community outreach and hearing from all sectors of the community? Vicki?
While running for the school board is a nonpartisan election, so it starts with that. I think in my tenure as an administrator, certainly as a teacher of our students, someone who listens to every voice that's in front of us. We need to get out into our community, connecting with our community businesses, our families, especially our families who are just in the hands of schools. So I think it's important that we are connecting with every facet of our community. And we here, the entirety of my life, and we have raised our children here. So, and my husband is not involved in schools, so that helps me to make connections outside of the school as well.
Okay, great. Angela?
So one thing we learned is to really include our community in pretty much everything that we do and every major decision that we have to make. I can tell you that the committees that I've sat on in the last four years that brought a very diverse group of our community together to help us to make these decisions. But it really was reflective of what this particular community values. So I would definitely continue to do that. This board brought back coffees. We do a once a month or once every couple of months outreach to the community. It's very casual. Come, sit down, have some coffee, chat with us about whatever it is that is important to you. And then we take that back to the rest of the board and the district just to keep those open flows of communication going with our, with our community.
Casey?
Thank you. To me, since the very beginning, everybody who I've ever approached is just a person. And I say just a person, I don't mean just a person. But you are a person, and it doesn't matter what party affiliation you belong to. We all have the same goal in mind, what's best for our students and our schools. We might differ on how we get there, but I am committed to working alongside of anyone and anyone and everyone who wants to make our schools and our students the best that they can be. It doesn't matter to me who you are, so long as you are really working forward to making sure our schools and our students are the best that they can. You are welcome at my table, I am welcome at your table. It doesn't matter to me. That's how a nonpartisan works to me, that we are just people working together to make our schools and our students the very best that they can be.
I think you just take the time to get to know the person, no matter what they are. Republican, Democrat, any company, it doesn't matter what it is. You just get the time, get, take the time to get to know them. More coffees, like we talked about, doing coffees, doing open discussions, involve the community, involve the different partners in the community. So the city commerce, the schools, Colorado Mesa, doesn't matter who it is. We're all involved somehow, whether it be the workforce or whether it be school. So just take the time to get to know them, talk to them, have a conversation.
Andrea?
Yeah, you know, just getting out and visiting the schools. I think some of my toughest critics have always offered to take them out for a cup of coffee, a beer, some iced tea. Unfortunately, some MOS don't take me up on it, but the ones that do, we end up having a great conversation. So one person always told me, it's hard to heat up close. And I think unfortunately, these days, if we can't get face-to-face, you stay in your own little silo. And unfortunately, then you just continue to stay in that same narrative about that person. And you're not necessarily looking to have a different conversation. And so I've always encouraged and reached out to people to say, let's go talk. And so I show up to places to have conversations with people. And so if they don't want to necessarily come and meet with me, I'll always go meet with them. And so that's how we start having better conversations.
Mike?
Can repeat the dead person in here, and I apologize. Definitely did not just, just meet with people like we're here today. I wasn't here four years ago, so I know these are all my basics to me. They might be familiar to Andrea and Angela, I apologize. But the community, you just go out, it's not partisan school board. I definitely tried to bring that, you know. You know, my beliefs are mine, their beliefs are yours, because it's Andrea's or hers. It doesn't matter. At the end of the day, we figure out how to work together, get our goal accomplished. And I bring the platter I experienced with that military effort, with people from all different boxes, like backgrounds, beliefs, nationalities. And at the end of the day, it didn't matter. We buckled down, got everything we need to get, you know, and got our jobs done. I still talk to ninety-eight percent of the people that I served with, and I'll talk.
Okay. All right. Okay, so this will be the last question, and then you'll have your ninety seconds to wrap up. So we're going to start with you, Angela, for this last question. And like of all the school shootings that have happened this year, are you satisfied with the measures that have been taken to keep students and students down safe in District 51 buildings? Is there more to be done in your scope?
Unfortunately, that's a great question and one that is really important that we deal with before it's necessary. Thank you to everyone who voted for the bond that was passed last year. We've utilized a great deal of that money to really enhance security in all of our buildings. We've got a state-of-the-art system now that is working in incredible ways to make sure that we know who's in our school, where they are in the school, and really making sure that we can keep track of what's going on around our buildings. So thank you for that. That was an important measure that we got done. With that money, we've also done a lot of other safety and security updates in a lot of our buildings. So we're going to start to see changes. Palisade High School is a big one, putting in those secure vestibules. Again, making sure that we know who's coming and going is a big part of that. There will always, unfortunately, will be more to do, and I think we've got the right to take all the measures necessary to make sure that we're all putting our safety.
All right. Casey.
Thank you, yeah. So this question hits deep. As someone who sends her tiled off to daycare and to public school soon, I live with that daily fear of if she's going to come home to me. So of course, this is on the top of my priority as a parent. And like, you know, Angela said, we've done a really great job of securing our vestibules, securing empty doors. I think I was looking at the central plans, making sure that, you know, there aren't very many access points for anyone to enter so that our students are safe on the inside. We also have to remember that our schools need to be inviting. There's a fine line between having a very secure complex at schools and having a school that our students and our family members feel welcome into, but also making sure that our students feel good inside of their schools. Often, school shooters are young children, and so they come back into their schools, and we need to make sure that our children feel safe and belong, and they feel like they belong in our schools, so that we can try to do some more preventative measures with our students as well.
So along with our long-range facility plan, we did do a lot of plans, and we looked at the schools that were, had issues, things going on. And with the approval of the bond, we have increased our security measures a lot. Almost.
I'm sorry. I don't want to interrupt you.
About almost two-hundred percent. And Andy does a great job with his security team and the trainings that they're taking for these things, I'm taking it very seriously, and all the trainings that they're doing with the security officers and with our police department, our resource officers and sheriff's department. So we've taken those very seriously as a school district and know that our kids are our utmost, our kids are our teachers, are most of our priorities. And so I believe that we're only going to get better with it, and hopefully, we will never have to use those procedures. But we can never be too safe or too sorry for those. And so with those things that they're doing and incorporating, I pray that we just keep our kids safe.
Angela.
Yeah, so again, thank you for everyone that voted to cast to that bond, and we've been able to extend those dollars dramatically with some safety and security procedures. There's also some technology that can sense behind clothing if there's any kind of weapon inside the clothing, which is really amazing technology as well that Andy, our head of security, has also helped implement. So along with that, we just need more people. We need more safety and security teams, and that also takes dollars. And so that is also going to need to be something that we need to look at for the future as far as safety and security goes. You know, with that, I think it is twofold, in making sure that we are meeting some of our students' needs and working with behavior issues so that we can kind of head things off early on, and work in that respect as well, and holding kids accountable. And then that also helps support our teachers in our classrooms as well. So there's always more to do.
Mike.
I've seen the security measures that have been put in place by the bond, and it's phenomenal, it really is. And there is that fine line between, you know, inviting, welcoming, if you don't necessarily want group, but inviting closer, but if you're ready, you can work it safe as a follower of course, you know? It's always in the back of my mind that this could happen. And unfortunately, that's the sad reality that we live in these days, and it all comes down to staffing and training. Staffing can always, always go, you know, up, you don't necessarily want to go down this tier, and training, there are wonderful trainings that just actually, like we were talking about, the training with these candidates we've been, and that's wonderful. That's an area of my life that I've always.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. That I've always, you know, gone back to, whether it be, you know, in military, going to different schools. I'm not very developed, I went to a con-working school, and I'm just continuing to keep myself training.
So this definitely is an unfortunate reality, and I have to say that I struggle with the amount of security and operations that need to be in our school while ensuring our families and our children that it's a place that they feel comfortable and welcome. So in two thousand thirteen or fourteen, I believe it was, was the first heavy lift increase in security in our buildings. I was a principal at our primary school at that time. There was a lot of work to be done in the needs that needed a lot of structural changes. So with that, then, we, they have put into place drills and requirements for all of us to be obligated to ensure safety. I do believe that the next steps that have occurred is exactly what needs to happen, but I hope you can hold on to the integrity of the hearing schools as well.
Okay. All right, and I apologize because I did have a lot more questions here, and there were good questions that we didn't get to, but I'm sure the candidates will stick around for a little while afterwards if you'd like to talk to them. So we are going to do our closing comments. They will be ninety seconds long, and we'll start with Vicki.
Well, once again, thank you all for being here. It's so lovely to be in front of as many people as possible just to share my thoughts and my ideas as your board member. Like I said in my opening statement, you know, I am a mom, I am a former teacher, and I am in the private business sector. So I offer a different three-pronged perspective to our school board that I haven't seen in many years. So I really hope to bring that, that perspective to our board to find creative solutions to the issues that we're facing today. We've had amazing progress in D-51, and that, there's no doubt about that, that leadership and our schools and our, and our staff and our students have really done a lot of heavy lifting. I want to keep going. I want to keep moving forward and focusing on some of those other issues that we see happening within our schools. And that means talking with our teachers, talking with our students and our staff. I'm so sorry, guys, that was a little distracting. Talking with our schools and our students, our staff and our community, early, often, and always, so that when we have these hard decisions that come up, we forge relationships, and we've brought our community into the fold, and they feel like they have a very good stake in the decisions that have been made. My slogan has been educate, elevate, and empower, and I truly mean that. I want to educate each and every child, elevate our district, and empower our community so that we have a thriving D-51 for years to come, and Mesa County's economy thrives right alongside of it.
Thank you. Well.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today in front of all you wonderful people. As I said in the beginning, four years ago, we ran, and again, we said we wanted to engage and power equip every student, and that's what I feel we've done in the last four years, and we won't want to stop there. We still have many more students to grow up, to come out of our system. Our graduation rate is increasing every year, and that's due to our teachers, due to our students, due to our parents. It's just everybody's cooperation, and we have more to come. I want to hopefully, in the next four years, be able to surpass that eighty-something percent and make it a hundred percent. To have a hundred percent graduation rate would be amazing. I don't think anybody achieves that, things like that. But as a district, we achieve it more and more each year, and it surprises me how our numbers keep increasing. But that's not just due to us, it's due to you guys and the parents and the voters and the kids that are doing the work. So I ask that the next four years, you keep in mind of somebody who has said he's going to do what he's going to do, walks through the halls, talks to the teachers, talks to our kids, who wanders a hallway, who's not just a person. Our kids have voices, and I would continue to be the voice for the kids and for our teachers and for the parents that I promised to be four years ago. So in the next four years, Will Jones, parent, coach, teacher, mentor, hope for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Andrea.
All right. Well, thank you again for having us and for the opportunity to be here today. I'm running for reelection because I believe deeply in the work that we've done. I've shown that I can make hard decisions, and I've made them with long-term sustainability and student success in mind. I believe leadership means doing what's right, not what's easy. We've made real progress, but we're not done. With your support, I will continue advocating for students, parents, teachers, and our community. I want every student in Mesa County to be prepared, not just graduate, but to succeed in life. Leadership matters, and our results show it. And I would be honored to continue to serve this community. So please vote for me on November fourth. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea.
Mike.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to me and everybody, and I guess it's maybe a little bit too late to hopefully. I'm running for election because the school board is doing a great job. There's always been improvement, whether I'm elected or not. Hopefully, there continue to be improvements, I'm sure, as well. I'm running on accuracy and accountability and action, not that this board hasn't had any of that, but I'd like to see more accountability from the top administrators, teachers, or anybody that's been kind of like everything. Accuracy kind of speaks for itself in action, you know? You guys don't want to be in the top, you guys have probably tired of being in the top already. I'm ready to get out and show you what I can do and be a leader that needs to be called for in times like this, especially with COVID-19 and everything going on. So I'm my ground, I hope you're voting November.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So my husband and I raised our two children during District 51. They both attended and graduated from District 51 schools. And there were times that we needed to have hard conversations with a teacher or a school administrator about something that was happening in the schools. And that's the kind of honest level of that builds strong schools, a true partnership between our families and our educators. I look forward to partnering with fellow school board members. I'm someone who works hard, I have extremely high expectations for the work that I do, and I appreciate conversations where I'm challenged on my thinking, because that's how we make the best decisions for our students. I can bring a source of stability and collaboration that instills confidence in our schools. I think it's our families, our teachers, and our community that partner for the success of our students. So thank you all for being here today and sharing about our public schools. I hope that you will vote for Vicki Woods in District 51 on November fourth. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela.
So we're just getting started. With strong leadership the last four years, we've not only stabilized D-51, but we've transformed it. Remember the financial mess, low reserves for new buildings, unhappy teachers? We fixed it and without raising taxes. Thanks to smart efficiencies and the 2024 bond, we do trust it is to pass. Now our reserves are a solid twenty percent. Health insurance is more affordable and robust. We've poured money back into classrooms. Student outcomes, those are skyrocketing. We've hit the largest graduation class ever, and for the first time in D-51 history, every single one of our schools earned the state's top two performance ratings. That's a hundred percent success. Meeting for beating state averages across the board. Our kids are more ready for the real world. And our teachers, the heart of D-51, we've delivered a thirty-eight percent pay increase raises over the last four years, more than the union asked for every single time. Starting pay now starts at fifty thousand, and we are retaining talent like never before. Tough calls like school closures save programming and put more of the budget back in the classrooms. The process is because we did the hard work, fiscally responsible, transparent, and laser-focused on kids. With your vote, I'll keep fighting for an even stronger outcomes, safer schools, and valuing our staff through tough state budget challenges. Let's build on the momentum for a D-51 our whole community can get excited about and stand behind. Angela, November fourth, support this campaign.
Okay, so thank you all for being here. Thank you all for putting your shout out there. Thank you for putting up some of your distraction for the audience there. Mike, meanwhile, also, we can now, which is thank Lois Dunn and Church Water and Rapp Foods for helping down there in terms of psych keeping and getting your questions to you. So thank you very much.